Okay. Good evening, I call this meeting of the Crestwood Board of Education Study Session. And I, well, we'll hold off on the pledge. Um, Ms. at what time, 5:30?
5:30, yep.
Ms. Janun, please take roll call.
This is Barry.
Here.
Ms. Elzayat.
Here.
Ms. Fawaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia is absent himself. Ms. Kaminski.
Here.
Mr. Sabal.
Here.
Mr. Cherry of Quorum.
Okay. So, the first order of business is the CFO updates?
So, I have two updates for us. Um, first one is the flood. I just wanted to let everyone know where we were standing with the flood at the moment. Um, we have the generator bid, that's the... Oh, I can't think of the word. Yeah, sorry, thank you. That escaped me. The critical needs, um, that's due August 19th. We have had walkthroughs, so there were five companies at the walkthrough, so we're expecting multiple bids for that. The auditorium equipment has been ordered. The work on the stage has begun, so they've started taking apart the damaged materials and going to replace that. The gym floor is in the process of being abated. Um, the transformer walkthrough is tomorrow, um, at 9:00 AM. So, we're hoping to have multiple companies do the walkthrough to put a bid on, on process, and we can expediate, expediate that. The hot water tanks are being installed. I believe there's five installed currently, so we have a total of eight, so we have three more to get finished. So, those should be up and ready in the next couple of weeks. And then the boilers are still on order. We have not received those as of yet.
Any questions on that from anybody?
Do we have any, um, rough ideas from companies like with the generators and with the boilers? What the time span is predicted to be?
With the generators, no, because of the fact that we've not received the bids yet. So, we won't know that until the bids. The other generators that are on order should be here within the next two to three weeks. Um, we're about in the four to fi- four-week process of that one, the original three ordered. I'm sorry, what was the other part of the question?
Um...
The boilers.
The boilers, thank you.
I don't have a rough estimate on that yet, I can work on getting that for you.
Okay. I mean, do we think we're gonna have it for school?
I don't have an answer, but I can try to find out.
Okay.
So, any other questions?
If I may add, I'm fairly confident we'll have them in time installed before we need to kick 'em on. We usually don't kick the boilers on until the end of September to run them in November. If we gotta kick 'em on a couple of weeks later, we should be okay.
Okay. Let's hope for a warm fall.
I'm hopeful that we'll have them in time for the cold weather.
Okay. Next item of business is the Associate Superintendent Updates?
Oh, uh, Ms. Morgan wasn't...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. It's still in your thunder. I'm telling you.
They're okay, we're moving ahead.
That's okay. So, at the last board meeting, there had been some questions regarding the additional additions on the elementary school and the pricing and the different expenses. So, what I had done was I emailed Aresman Architecture to find out exactly what costs were included and what were not. Um, they did send an update, so attached, you're gonna get three different updates for each of the buildings. When I looked at the construction costs, what they had been talking to us about and speaking to us was strictly the construction. So, that was the materials, the construction, the putting up the structure. That didn't include the architect costs, the design and those type of things. So, there's a soft cost based on the overall cost of the architect, the structure. So, what I did is I had them print off the costs and we went through so that you can share it. Um, that was so that you could see it, I apologize. So, that's one of the reasons why we pulled it off to vote tonight. We did not want to bring it to vote tonight without the additional information that a couple of the trustees had asked for at the last meeting. Um, the major increase in costs and really the soft costs are the last section. And those are just contingencies for a do- design contingency, so that when you talk about a design contingency is if something goes in and all of a sudden we change our mind and want something added, then they change the design and that changes the cost of that aspect of it.
What was factored in though, right?
It's factored into the soft costs. So, there's can- the original, it's factored into the original architect cost, but if we go and alter the design like tenfold, then that's an additional cost for us. And that's where the contingency comes in. Yes ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't say yes ma'am.
I'm sorry. For the soft costs, um, that money won't come from the S.R. fund, then where would that come from?
It will come from the S.R. fund. We do have enough money to cover the S.R. fund in S.R. 2, um, all but $281,000 of the total package, even with the soft costs.
Okay.
And then the 281,000, I anticipate S.R. 3 to be available for that. Uh, as soon as that's released, then we can apply for that and use that 281,000. Again, though, the soft costs are contingent on overall costs. So, at this point, they're continuously updating the budget. Like, you can see that they included the site survey and the soil sample, and those are actual costs or actual estimates where the other ones are soft costs.
Would you have a question?
Just real quick, the one, this one, um, 5,700, so I'm thinking this is Hillcrest?
Um, it says right up at the top underneath the Crestwood School District.
Yes, Hillcrest, okay. So, um, the cost per square foot on that one is significantly higher than the other two.
That's because of the fact that the site paving, they'd have to do, remember she explained that they would have to do pa- some paving and move the dumpster? Whereas the other buildings, they didn't have to do those things.
Such a small area though, for it to affect the price that much.
Well, Mr. Sabal? Okay.
Yeah, they, thank you. You had, uh, they had mentioned that they were gonna look into potential costs of looking at the additional footing costs if we wanted to build up in the future, and she said she would get back with you on that.
She hasn't done that yet.
She hasn't got...
I will follow up with her.
So, total project cost for all three are about 7.2, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And that's all gonna be through the S.R. fund?
Yes.
Okay, so there is no cost to the, the general public in the school district?
No.
So, i- i- and if I may add, President Barry, as Ms. Morgan mentioned, all this should be covered through S.R. 2 funding. There may be a $280,000 amount outside of S.R. 2, but once S.R. 3 is released, it will come out of S.R. 3. S.R. 3 is estimated to be 15.4 million dollars for us. And that's gonna help us additionally with more infrastructure needs. So, we have focused our attention on S.R. funding for staffing in terms of social emotional supports as well as infrastructure, all which it is designed for.
So, if I may ask a question, does anybody else have a question?
I just have one question. Does, um, do we have a, uh, a performance period for effort, S.R. funding?
I believe five years, is it five years?
Depends on which pot of money it is, three to five years.
For example, S.R. 3, when it comes out, is there a performance period? Is it normally the date where you get the funds and then you have three years?
Typically, yes. So, we won't, since we have not released the funds, they won't start counting till the funds are actually released.
Okay. Are we allotting for the time schedule?
Yes.
So, for funding release and then payments to, um, the project?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And, and the other piece too with the S.R. 3 funding, um, once we have a date of when we're gonna receive that, hopefully soon, um, we, we're not sure what, I mean, it's already been approved, it's already passed, it just hasn't been released by the Department of Treasury yet. Once it's released, then we, our team will come back to the board, just like we did with the, with these classrooms, with some additional, um, projects for infrastructure in reference to, um, expanding our elementary capacities as well as looking at the career and technical center at the middle school. Those are things that we've discussed in the past, but once it becomes official, we have it, we can jump in, 'cause we have, um, and I'm taking something from Penny right now. But the architects are continuing their walkthroughs in the other buildings as well, and she's gonna discuss that.
If I may ask a question, um, I want to, this isn't set in stone. It has not been bid, it hasn't, okay, so it could be less?
Mm-hmm.
It could be more?
I hesitate to say yes, because she did indicate this was the high side, but I guess that's always possible. There is always that possibility. I don't wanna go in and say, no, it's not gonna be more than this, but anything that, anything that we're going to spend money on, you're going to see first.
Okay.
So, you will always know what we're pushing through for a bid.
Yeah, I just don't want us to be caught where...
Of course.
Not at all, I appreciate that, thank you.
And if I may reiterate what Ms. Morgan said, once the board approves for us to move forward, nothing happens until the board approves the bid. So, you'll see the actual cost that the bid comes back at to do the work.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Fawaz?
Um, when you do break ground or start or whatever, when we get to that point, are we having, um, like Scott and team oversee? Or is there gonna be a separate committee to kinda oversee or keep them, you know, watch progression, keep them accountable?
So, currently, Scott and his team are involved in every conversation before it even gets to me. So, before it even gets to me, they have their conversations, they come up with what they need to do, then it gets to me for the next step of approval. Our goal is looking at S.R. funding to possibly bring in a construction management liaison, somebody that can support focusing solely on the construction project, where Scott is involved, but he's not the one that actually has to walk these individuals through the process. That will support him and his team as well as support us by having someone who's a third party that's gonna be going through the process.
Does the fund cover that team?
That gets covered through S.R. funding as well, yes.
If I may, I, I guess that would be concerning to me, um, because I feel that Scott knows the buildings and he's been very diligent, and I personally wouldn't wanna see someone come in and not know what is happening. I, I don't wanna talk about the past, but I will...
But the question comes down to, do we wanna overtax the staff we have?
No.
Or do we want, you know...
But I just wanna make sure that, that he is involved in the process, so there's no surprises for us.
That's why I said, Scott is involved before it even gets to me, and he's still involved in the process when there's construction.
Right, but if, is he going to be also overs- I'm not saying on a daily basis, but will he be part of the process along the way? We're not just gonna exclude him.
I have to say, I, I proved in the last two years that everything we do is systematic.
Right.
And everybody's part of the system's process.
Okay.
Nobody's left out of the process, so def- 100% he's part of the process.
Mm-hmm.
But he's not gonna be overtaxed to be the one that oversees those contractors daily, 'cause that's a full-time job.
I know, I'm just saying that with what I've seen over at the high school, over at the elementary, at the, all the issues that we've had that Scott has saved us tons of money on, and personally, I don't want us to have that.
Well, that was before the, the district had systems in place, we have systems in place.
I understand, but we still wanna make sure that things are, you know, being followed through. Go ahead, Mr. Sabal.
Thank you. Um, when we're looking at liaison, you're looking at a percentage of total cost as, as compensation, is that what you're doing, or...
Actually, no, we're looking at, um...
Bringing them on salary?
Yeah, bringing, not salary, but being on, on a daily rate or, like a daily rate based on how long the project takes, um, so that whomever comes in can see the project from the beginning, all the way through to the end. And that person won't be, they're not gonna be hired by the Crestwood, they're gonna be contracted by our district. So, therefore, that person doesn't have any authority to approve or not approve things. That authority process has to go through, uh, the supervisor, then through CFO, and then through me, and then any purchasing through the board.
Do you plan on having, I, I guess to, to Ms. Barry's point, do you plan on having maybe a, at least two or three people before it gets to you? I think to that point, I know we're bringing somebody in that probably has, you know, a different skillset, and I'm not too familiar with Scott's skillset on, on construction, but I'm sure it's vast. But I think having more than one set of eyes looking at something, especially three people, you know, even if, you know, before it starts getting to you, because...
Oh, of course.
I know about as much about this construction as you do, I'm sure, you know, I...
Yeah.
And I'm gonna rely on them, but I would really like to see, as long as the cost isn't exorbitant.
So, our head custodians, our maintenance, so one of the things that since we've come in and since we saw what the issue with the bond was, we've increased maintenance staff, we've increased custodial staff, we've given head custodians more authority and responsibility to make decisions in their buildings. I mean, I'll be honest, like with Joe over at the high school, Joe knows that building inside and out. Joe was able to solve issues right away.
Is he a general contractor?
No, but through that redundancy, by time Scott has the, okay, his team tells us what we need to do and they review it, and it gets to Penny, it's gone through, it's going to go through three, four people before it even gets to me where I say, okay, let's move forward to the next step, and/or let's bring this to the board, 'cause we have to make payment.
I think the reason we're asking is just to help minimize, you know, potential long-term costs. Because at the end of the day, if you've got three minds looking into something, totally understand every aspect of it, you know, this, um, our, you know, architect firm acting as our general contractor in a sense, I'm sure they're doing a great job, but at the end of the day, it's better to have that...
They're gonna...
That backup system, that's all.
I will say this, once we're done with them, we're not gonna allow them to run the job. They're gonna be the architect on the job, they're not gonna run the job. Whoever we bring in as the construction liaison will run the job with the supervisor and his team.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I like what I heard at the end, the supervisor and the team. Go ahead, Ms. Kaminski.
So, and I'm a little tainted because of what happened, obviously, with the bond, and I was pretty intimately involved with all that. And I'm just gonna say my opinion as me, um, I almost, well, not almost, I would prefer Scott to be given that position and to hire a temporary person to be in charge of custodial staff, just because he knows the ins and out of everything. Just something for you to think about. He dealt with so many of the problems before and found so many issues. I have faith in him and I don't have faith in an unknown, so...
I mean, that, that's always an option, I just wanna be careful to steal from Peter to give to Paul.
I, I understand, I just, I don't wanna be anywhere near where we were with Ock.
First and foremost, I guarantee you, we're not gonna be anywhere near where we were with any previous bond experience, 'cause we have systems in place now. There were no systems in place. Previously, nothing was checked, double-checked, no one in central office knew what was going on, that's how it was.
That is true, that is true.
Now, nothing gets approved unless I approve it. So, I'm actively involved. Secondly, with this process, what we have to understand is, we also, there is a limit workforce out there. So, we're still short a couple custodial, if I, if I'm correct. We're, it, it's, it's very difficult to find additional people to support us in the custodial realm. I wanna make it clear, 'cause I don't want anybody in the public or Scott to think we don't have faith in Scott. It has nothing to do with faith in him, it has everything to do with the system and not overtaxing him.
Oh, I agree, he can't be where he was before, because the man was gonna break. And I appreciate you looking out to split that up. I just suggested an alternative, I'm gonna split it up.
But I just want, I don't want anyone to think the other...
No, I, I understand.
And I appreciate that.
No, just a, uh, second to what Sue said, um, there were a lot of things that he caught, you know, because of his experience, that personally, nobody else would have caught, the floor, the epoxy floor, just giving an example. If I would've looked at an epoxy floor, I mean, I don't have the background knowledge, but he was able to save us 170,000 by having them redo it. We would've never known that stuff if he didn't have the background knowledge. So, those are the things that are concerning to me.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any other questions? Okay, Ms. Morgan?
That is all I have. Oh, I do have to, I'm sorry, I apologize. Um, we do have the architect that walked through Berwin, so we will be getting some feedback on that within the next, um, two weeks. And then we also have the architect who walked through Cherry Hill, so we'll also be getting some feedback from them as well, within the next two weeks.
Any meetings planned for them? Because I know we were supposed, we were supposed to be part of a, a group.
After they meet with us to tell us the different options that we have, then we're gonna establish a meeting with the community for Cherry Hill.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Associate Superintendent's Updates?
One staff. So, um, really, my updates today focus around staffing for the most part. Being a growing district and, uh, expanding some of our programs and being future-driven and supporting those programs, staffing plays a huge role in that. So, as you've seen in the progress posting sheet, there have been a lot of postings that are going out. You know, uh, we have had a few resignations and some retirements. However, um, as we've been putting the postings up, we have not been having difficulty getting candidates who want to come and join the team. So, you know, it, it's sad to see people go, but, you know, they have their personal reasons for needing to do that, and, you know, we're excited about the people who want to come and join the team. Um, one of the biggest pieces in the staffing outlook has been aligning staffing to support programs that align essentially with the district's strategic plan. Ultimately, that's the goal. Um, and as an administrative team, we're constantly assessing and evaluating these needs and whether or not we're successful. So, that is an ongoing process that we continually discuss with feedback from our administrators and from teachers. Um, one of the main focuses of the district's strategic plan has been to disaggregate data, but not just achievement data, really looking at our demographic data, our program data, our perception data, and fitting that all together in order to identify strengths where we can continue to build on to support programs, but also identify our challenge areas or areas where we can improve. Once we've identified those areas for improvement, you know, we look at how to best support those. Uh, the district's strategic plan had identified some areas for improvement, which have resulted in the recommendation for the addition of positions to support these areas of need. Uh, the positions have been studied by Dr. Masalim and myself after those recommendations were made, and we have approved these positions in order to support, but also enhance and encourage the district's trajectory of forward and upward movement um, and, and continuing on that path and in that direction to really be a shining district. Some of the positions that I just wanted to shed some light on today, that are new positions that we will be adding to support the strategic plan for both the academic and social emotional achievement and success of our students are the freshman lead teacher, the high school numeracy coach, the high school literacy coach, the high school math intervention teachers, and, uh, the middle school math coach position. I think it's important to note that with all of these positions, they will all be funded through federal grant programs, either Title I or S.R. funding, so they will not be impacting the general budget. In addition to staffing, in order to support, you know, the district's strategic plan, we made sure to bring in the finance department on those conversations to ensure that there was sustainability, um, and that we were not only supporting, um, our high goals that we've set for ourselves, but that as a district, we are able to financially sustain those goals, um, as well.
Any questions from anyone? Yes, Ms. Fawaz?
So, we can, so, fin- financing, we will have it long-term. And then, um, will these positions be offered to current staff first and then outside?
Correct.
Or just, um, posting it in general to everyone?
So, we did put up the posting, however, the way the posting system works is it automatically separates out internal and external applicants for us. And so, we are looking at our internal applicants first, prior to looking at external applicants. It's also a good way through these positions, I know we've talked about in several discussions about providing leadership opportunities for staff, current staff, that really want to take on additional responsibilities and be a part of those broader conversations, you know, at a, at a more district level or at a larger level. And so, having positions like these available to those staff will provide those opportunities that we've discussed wanting to have for our current, um, staff in the district.
Um, I thought you could comment, I like what you're saying. Uh, my question is, if we are, we are replacing them with internal staff, that means we would have to re, um, have those positions re-bid out, correct?
Mm-hmm.
My only concern right now is, um, where are we going to be placing all these, these new staff members? Did we think about...
So, currently...
Where?
Well, so currently, what's happened is both at the middle school and the high school, they're reallocating rooms.
Okay.
And, for example, I'll give an example, and I really, the, you know, teachers are aware of this as well. There is a room here, I believe it was more of a teacher lounge, where now it's gonna be a room that's gonna house, uh, uh, I think the social workers and the school psychologists, something of such. And everyone's understanding that we have to repurpose, because we don't have the space. The second thing is, these individuals won't need a classroom except for the interventionists. So, every one of these positions are teachers. These are not administrators, they're not third...
So, they're not gonna need their own space?
No, only the math interventionists, because they're gonna be teaching a class.
Okay, good.
Um, so, these are all teachers. And the beautiful thing about it is, we don't wanna make them administrators, because no, we don't, we don't need any more administrators. But number two, our teachers are gonna be more comfortable when another teacher goes in to work with them, 'cause it's not evaluative. This is growth, this is coaching. The areas that Dr. Lazar mentioned are, in our data, are the areas that we are struggling the most. The early impact on literacy, our freshmen coming in that are struggling with literacy, especially in the middle school, and our numeracy. And with the move to semesters, what we're implementing is research-based, so it's not something that we just created on a whim. This is scientifically research-based in school districts with similar demographics as ours. Moreover, um, I had a great meeting with, um, the high school departmental chairs, myself and Mr. Abdouhadi and, um, and Andrew O'Hair met with them just to talk about the vision and the future, 'cause many of them are new. And our new departmental chair process, this is interview process now, the principal has to interview who's gonna be the department chair.
Now that you've said that, I'm sorry to cut you off, but...
That's okay.
Can we get a list, so we know who's where?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we can do that for you, it's not a problem.
Okay.
So, these, every department chair was on board with, you know, basically, understanding that we have to serve all the kids. And there's, you know, and, and we, we gotta make sure that we're, we're, we're not missing those kids in the middle. Through this process, and that's the other reason why we moved our Title I program. So, we've taken our Title I program to the next level, where our high school is now receiving Title I funds, did not receive Title I funds in the past. So, there was, the money wasn't being allocated correctly to support our students K-12. Now that the high school is a title, has Title I funding... No, they, they became Title last year, and, um, I gotta give Zainah Jawad a lot of credit, because I was like the taskmaster on that, and I was driving her crazy, but we got it done. And in that process, that opened up close to a million dollars or three-quarters of a million, something like that. Am I, am I overestimating right around there?
Right around there.
For the high school, that's how we can pay for these positions, so it's not coming out of our general budget. Now, with Title I, there usually isn't a cut in Title I. Now, if there's ever a reduction in Title I, you usually take that reduction out of supplies and materials, or you move some things around. S.R. funding, like I said, we'll have it for five years when, when it gets implemented, but we have a strong forecast for the next five years, as well as looking at student enrollment, so we don't foresee that being a problem. Now, if God forbid, it becomes a problem and we notice that in four years, we readjust. But from now until then, to take advantage of this federally, of these federal funds, i- it's prime, it's a prime time, especially for where we're at. This whole infrastructure package and everything that's coming down from the previous Trump administration or the Biden administration is what our district needs. It's like, if, it's like if timing was perfect, it's perfect. And we gotta hit that, the hammer while it's hot, and that's where we're at right now. Sorry for that long.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone? Okay, anything else, Ms.?
Nope.
Dr. Lazar?
Actually...
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Fawaz.
Different, but while we have Linda, um, we received an email from the M.A.S.B., uh, and I know other people have been talking about this, but could you define, I guess, or further explain CRT, the Critical Racial Theory, and how that, um, affects our district and...
I'll explain. It is a hot topic.
Yes.
It's a very hot topic across the U.S. And the irony, not irony, but when I was at my superintendent's conference a couple of weeks back, there were a group of superintendents who I was speaking with who basically have told me that because they are following through with the Critical Race Theory, because they're trying to equalize what curriculum looks like, they're running into a lot of roadblocks, heavy, heavy, heavy opposition. So, what is Critical Race Theory? Basically, what Critical Race Theory is, is that you teach, let's take social studies more than anything. You teach the Civil War from both perspectives. You teach colonialization from all perspectives. You know, you don't just teach it from one perspective. You teach the immigration, uh, process and patterns in the U.S.
Where are you getting the other perspectives?
From primary sources. So, one of the directions we're going as a district, especially in social studies, and Mrs. uh, uh, Harvey Mercedes Harvey, right? She is gonna take the lead on it, she's one of the department chairs in the high school for social studies. We, as a district, wanna move away from textbooks. We, as a district, wanna start looking at primary and secondary resources, because that's what the SAT, that's what the ACT, that's what college prep is all about. And what primary and secondary resources are, I'll give you an example. Um, and I can give this example, 'cause it's what I taught when I was in high school. When I was teaching slavery and reconstruction, I would use the textbook, because it had things that are used, but I would also have them read directly from Frederick Douglass's autobiography. I would have them read directly from W. Dubois's Souls of Black Folk. Those are primary sources, 'cause that's in the words of the primary person that you're studying. And then secondary sources would be somebody who writes a biography on Frederick Douglass. Textbooks are third source, thir- third source. No university and nowhere on the SAT do they want you to quote from third source. And when our kids get into university, they're expected to go to, go to journal databases and draw directly from those journal databases as a first source primary. That's what the SAT is. It's all first choice primary. Even the M step and the struggle that our kids have, but not just our kids, across the nation. This is a national problem. But our kids have struggled with this because many of our kids don't have the vocabulary that some other kids may have. Because remember, if you grew up in an E L home or in a, in a home that struggles, by third grade, you have 20,000 less words in your vocabulary than if you grew up in a home where both of your parents are college educated. So what happens is kids struggle when they enter college and on the SAT on nonfiction sources. That's primary source material. And Critical Race Theory, the whole idea behind it is, is so that you can see the historical significance from every perspective, those that actually lived through it.
So would that curriculum go through, like, I don't know, the curriculum subcommittee? Or like, are we going to approve that? Are we review, like?
So we're not changing curriculum, if I, if I may. We're not changing curriculum. That's the nice thing about them. You go to primary and secondary sources, you're not changing the curriculum. The curriculum that we follow is through the Michigan Merit Curriculum. There's a set of power standards that are set by the state of Michigan, which is set by the Common Core Standards that came out several years ago. Michigan curriculum states that in order for you to attain credit in U.S. history, M M C credit for U.S. history, you have to cover these specific genres and you have to cover these specific elements of that for U.S. history to get full. So it's the district's response, the district can develop those classes however they choose. When we go to, if we were changing textbooks, that would go through curriculum council. If we were changing like our math approach in elementary, that would go through curriculum council, then that would come to the curriculum committee, so on and so forth. But we're not changing any curriculum. The only thing we may be possibly looking at to change that will come to the curriculum subcommittee is the math instruction. And that's going to be one of the tasks of the math coaches because they're going to be working with the elementary teams to identify, do we want to continue with everyday math or do we want to change our instructional format? That would be a whole flip in instructional delivery.
So no part of history is actually being erased from being taught?
No, absolutely not.
You're adding, right, different perspectives, I guess?
Correct.
And then you have, as a district, are we implementing because we have to for certain funding or chose to or?
We're doing it because it's the right thing to do. Let me give you an example. I also used to teach Edward Said's Orientalism. I don't know if any of you know who Edward Said is or if you've read his work. Edward Said opened up my eyes to the idea behind the term Orientalist and what it really meant and how the Middle East came about. These were things that I was never aware of as a young man. These were things that I learned growing up when I wanted to research and understand, what's my heritage? Where did my, where did my ancestry come from? That is an example of Critical Race Theory, to show in a different perspective than what just textbooks show. The other thing you have to keep in mind about textbooks, textbooks are written based on the region that buys their book the most.
Right, I mean, I guess the, I guess the fear would be where you get your primary sources from and what that perspective of whoever wrote the book was and what they're preaching.
It's all scientifically research-based. It is based off of the New York Times, you know, top 100 nonfiction writers. These are, everything we will pull in is going to be things that universities use as reputable sources. It's not going to be some pamphlet that somebody wrote just the other day. I mean, when we talk about primary sources, we're talking about actually going into electronic databases that have been verified and validated by universities as legitimate sources.
And this is starting at the high school level or the entire?
We're starting small. We're starting with just social studies at the high school level. And then through their P L Cs, they're going to be working with language arts to start adapting similar things to read. Because the other thing we want to do in our middle school and high school, but we're starting at high school and it's going to trickle down, is we don't want a young man, a young woman to walk out of social studies and go to English and forget everything that they were taught. We want to bring it together. Research shows that if we're teaching similar content in multiple content areas, students retain that information and it becomes much more valuable to them. So we don't want to departmentalize the departments. We want to be more inclusive and infused. So through their P L Cs, the professional learning communities in which this new calendar that we have gives them the days and the time to do it. It's no longer, you have to come on a Saturday or you got to do it at 5:00 in the evening. They're, this is the year where they're going to be building this curriculum for the future and implementing it as we go forward. And I say curriculum loosely, please don't, I'm not, we're not changing the curriculum, but the, the, the resources, how they're going to be infusing the resources, how they're going to be manipulating the instructional strategies. That's our focus. Our focus is not on changing curriculum. Our focus is on creating an environment where every single student feels part of the learning process. And that's where CRT comes in. I know there's people saying CRT wants to get rid of, look, I don't want to go there. It has nothing to do with that.
Ms. Kaminsky, go ahead.
So I'll be honest, I didn't research this before, so I just Googled it. There's a House bill and a Senate bill in Michigan regarding CRT. And you guys are probably aware, 952 and 460, and they're talking about a 5% penalty. So are you guys watching that then?
If you, if you don't teach it.
Right.
Yes, no, we know that's there, but we're making this decision before that even came out.
Okay.
That's why I'm saying, we, this decision.
That's why I asked for about the funding.
No, this decision, let me just say this. That 5%, if I didn't feel this was what best for our districts, we'll figure out a way to eat that 5% somewhere else. But this is good for our kids, forget that 5% or not. It really is good, especially our community, our kids. You have to understand, I was saying earlier how I'm coaching with kids and stuff. There are a lot of our kids who, they don't have access to things that your children have or that my children have. Those worldly views, and this is an opportunity for them to hear things and to learn things because it's just going to make them stronger adults, stronger human beings. And it's, it's because it's the right thing to do. It's not easy, there's going to be work involved, but I'm going to tell you something, and I'm so proud of this. Every teacher I speak to, every meeting I have, they're pumped, they're ready to go. They want to do these things.
We do have a very diverse, you know, set of students.
Yes, we do.
So.
Yes.
Yes, I think they'll, I'll get something out of it, I guess.
Okay, moving on, yes, Mr. Sabal.
Thank you. Now, you know, this is becoming a highly politicized debate.
Correct.
And I'm sure many of the citizens in this community may differ with the opinion that was put today. So not to say that I do or don't, I'm just, you know, at the end of the day, I agree with a lot of what you said and I've heard the other side too. And, you know, it's probably something that's going to require a little more conversation just for the sake of making sure we're doing the right thing for the kids first and foremost. With all due respect to the adults in the community, at the end of the day, we're all sitting here for the sake of these kids and we want what's best for them. But I just think it requires a little more thought and effort. And I love what you said, I'm not worried about the 5%. We shouldn't be worried about the 5% if it's not the right thing for the kids. So thank you for saying that, but I think it just requires a little more conversation, maybe offline, just so that we're all on the same page.
Sounds good.
If I may, we will be talking about the committee meet, meet groups that we put together, and one of them is that. So it would probably be something that could be discussed in maybe more detail. Okay? Anything else on that? Okay, moving on, superintendent's updates.
So I just want a quick update. So I've met with cabinet and we discussed goals and we discussed, you know, what we're planning on doing this year. And first and foremost, this coming year will be the first year that we'll have an assessment, hopefully, that every student will be taking. The nice thing too is that we are, we've implemented, we're implementing the iReady assessment, which is a formative assessment. It's based around what we just talked about, the Common Core Standards, and it's progressive. It's not a one-time test. So we're hoping that students are going to take it probably three times throughout the year, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and the end of the year, which that's how we're going to evaluate growth. Through this process, we're also, you know, this will be the year that we're going to be putting forward full, you know, the literacy component of Fanta's, but now they are literacy learning kits, L I I kits.
If I can just ask, I'm sorry, the iReady, that's progressive, right?
It's correct. It's progressive because what it does is it identifies where the students are at in comparison to the Common Core, not in comparison to other kids across the nation. The problem with the N W E A, in my opinion, was you were, I was comparing kids, but I didn't know what they were strong at or what they weren't strong at. Where this, the Common Core, it can help us identify where those students need to be and where they need to go. Because even though the Common Core is, I'm stopping, it's also P S A T, it's also S A T. So this is going to be, you know, this is going to take time for it to really kick in, but this is going to be the first year that we're going to be able to kick it in. Additionally, God willing, as long as everything goes well, this will be the first year we'll have full M step scores. This will be the first year we'll have full P S A T, S A T scores. So we're planning on using this data as our base this year.
If I may, I'm really excited about the iReady. I think that's one of the best things we've come to because our kids have missed out on those opportunities to grow.
How many, how many years it takes to?
It's going to take, we're going to, for us to see the, to act, for us, so every year we're going to assess the data.
Yeah.
But for us to truly see the fruits of our labor, it takes three to five years. All research says that in three years you start seeing it and five, yeah.
Most of them.
Now, hey, the way we're going as a district, it might take us two years. You know, I mean, we've been moving pretty fast on things, so hopefully it does.
I see it happening.
Yeah, thank you. The principals are excited, the teachers, 97% of the teachers are excited. Some are, some are like, oh my God, this is so much. But once they get into the diagnosis, because here's the beautiful thing about it, you get a diagnostic, you know exactly what you have to do for that child.
Can I ask, because I, I know in this, I'm wondering, because we didn't talk about it in study session, but I know it's on our agenda to vote on, like the news E L A. Is that going to assist, like, because from what I know about it and people that I know that use it in other districts, it's a really good thing, what I'm saying, like, is that being brought in to help prepare for those type of?
Oh, it all works in tandem.
Okay.
Everything we're doing, as Dr. Lazar mentioned, it's all part of the strategic plan in the school improvement process.
Okay.
Nothing will be purchased or put into place that doesn't fit the needs of the data. It has got to be data-driven and they have to interconnect and they have to intertwine. We are moving away from, as I promised, this departmentalization. We're, we're going to be whole child. That's why the social emotional piece really kicks in there. So to further that, the cabinet goals, you know, so we're going to be implementing those goals. But additionally, we're also, our, our goals are going to be measurable in terms of how are we doing fiscally? How are we doing with our P R? How are we doing with our, with our support services? You know, how are we doing with making sure that, you know, our, our systems are working? Now, what I want to reiterate is that through any changes, you have all seen these last couple of years, a lot of people struggle with change. And that is why I always say, and, 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 you know, heck, I'll make Kristin my, my witness, anyone that has come into my office, my response to them has always been, give me a solution. If you don't think the change is working, give me a solution. And some people came in with some ideas, not solutions, and those ideas were put into place. So we're going to be, continue being solutions-based mindset. We're going to continue being focused-based. And our goals are going to revolve around areas where we all want to improve a little bit more than we did the last year. And one of the big things out of cabinet is going to be our customer service and our relationships with staff, community, and, and, and students. And that's going to be key, crucial. That's also going to be a component of all of our building administrators. And the, once my goals are done, I mean, of course, I share them with the board and we will review them. And then once the board approves my goals, then that trickles down to cabinet and then that trickles down to administration. Because I don't want their goals way out of whack from mine because that's not a true school improvement process. So goals are being worked on as we speak and as things become a little bit more normalized. So I wanted to give you an update on that. Last year, I submitted my goals to the board in October. So I'm hoping to submit them to you in September this year because my evaluation, I believe, not Kristin's going to have it scheduled, but I believe it's scheduled for either the end of October or early November.
Okay, I'm glad you brought that up because that was one of my questions. Before we do that, I would like, if you can take the lead and let us have a training for all the board members so they know what to look at, what to expect.
Okay.
If we can have M A S B come out and do that.
Yeah, Kristin, if you can set that up, thank you.
Yeah, that was, it was.
For what, I'm sorry?
For the superintendent's evaluation.
It's, they've changed the format for the evaluation and it is quite detailed. And it's not something that you can just say, okay, I'll fill out this form and be done in an hour. I mean, if you're really looking at it and going through it, it's a lot of information. Some of the informations appears that it contradicts one another even. So to have somebody come in and give a little information to us, I know I would appreciate it because I struggled with it last year. I think the entire board struggled with it. And the evaluation is not done by a subcommittee, it is done by the entire board. And there's a rating system and a scale system. So it's very subjective as opposed to objective and, and you try and stay that way. But there's some things that are a little gray, at least they were for me.
And it's only fair for everybody to be on the same page.
Yeah, it's not an easy thing and, you know, to come in and not have done one. I, I just found it, because it's so important and I think that we owe it to, you know, our administrator to give him, you know, a honest and fair evaluation, I just think it's important.
Mr. New?
He did so great and then didn't really.
Well, I don't expect it to change anything.
No, I'm kidding, no, I'm kidding.
If you think the Friday updates are bad to the new board members, so Salwa, trustee Faouas, trustee Janu, trustee President Barry, I got to remember you guys' decisions.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
So trustee Sabal and trustee Alzai, if you think some of the Friday updates are thick, my evaluation's like this.
It's so.
Oh, it's about what, 12 pages?
It wasn't just that, it was the way, so eventually I called, M A S B was like, okay, I don't know what I'm doing. And then they just, and I was like, okay, once you have somebody explain it to you, it's not so bad. But when you're just looking at it, and then you realize you can go put it all in online and then it does it for you. But until I knew that, I was like, okay, this is.
I read that earlier.
You can have all the evaluations if you guys want, and that's all I do all year long.
I, I do too, I've done a ton of them. This is like none I've seen, maybe you have, but it's.
Minor buckets too, so I get it.
It's unique in to itself.
The difference moving forward after this year though, is there'll be a lot more data in my future evaluations because we haven't had the assessment.
Well, no, it wasn't just that.
This is great about adding year over year for you, it's like it's right there for the data there.
The tests and stuff, but anyways, like I said, once they explained it to you, like walked through the way their system worked, I was like, but if you just go into it, it was.
It's only fair for everybody to be on the same page. Okay, anything else? I'm sorry, Ms. Kaminsky, go ahead.
I, I have two questions for Dr. Masalim, not related to anything on here, if it's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
City council meetings tomorrow night and it's going to be held here. And it's going to be a very tense meeting from everything I've heard. Did they fill out the form to use our facility? Not that I'm expecting that we charge them, but just for liability reason, in case anything happens to anybody. I've gotten quite a few phone calls and talked to two city council members today, so.
So I, I have to check with, with, with the team because I, I did approve it. So if there wasn't a form that was filled out, then I didn't emphasize to fill the form out, but I'll take care of that first thing in the morning.
Yeah, just for liability wise.
Understood, understood.
And then the second thing, and Danielle, help me out here, is the masks. I know CDC has said that, I know the gross point, parents are going to their school board meeting tonight and they're insisting that the kids wear masks. I know the numbers are getting bad. I've talked to my pulmonologist friend at Beaumont and at Ascension and their numbers are going up and a lot of them are kids. The South, obviously, we know is bad. Are we going to address this again before school starts? Because I'm not comfortable with not following through on something.
Yeah, most definitely. We can always readdress it. I have, we can put that on the agenda for the next board meeting.
We should.
As I said.
Put it on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda for next board meeting.
And honestly, it moves, is it okay if I?
Go ahead.
Okay. We should talk about it closer to the building opening because it's so fluid. It is just so fluid. You know, two weeks ago, this wasn't a problem. Today, it's a problem. So, you know, I, I think that we should put it on the agenda closer to us opening.
And I, I agree, I appreciate that because that was. And, and I, I, I agree, I appreciate that, because that was very similar to how we handled the pandemic when it first started. We made decisions as it got closer, because we didn't want to go back and forth. And that's why in my letter, I specifically stated, as of now.
If I, if I can make a recommendation, did our school nurse start yet?
Uh, when does she, her official start date?
She works on the teacher's calendar, so her official first day of work is the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Um, however. Our next board meeting is the twenty-sixth.
Well, we can, as long as she's not out of town or something, we can ask her to come. I don't think that would be an issue.
Is there something we want her to prepare at the time?
Um, we'll talk about that offline.
Just have a part of the conversation.
And I, sorry. I think, um, regardless, nothing is set in stone. I mean, even if school were to start and, and I'm just saying, no matter what, in two weeks, what we decide, you never know what's going to happen.
I can, uh, oh, sorry.
Let's just, go ahead.
Um, if you guys want to for the next meeting, I can set up some type of presentation and have some people come from the county to, uh, present, give.
Who would it be?
Information. Um, our emergency preparedness division?
Okay, but, uh.
Not emergency management.
Right, but do we have like a medical, um, medical?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's under the public health, um, it's under the public health department. I mean, I can ask.
I, I'm just afraid, we don't want to, my only thing is, I don't know if you agree with me or not, we don't want to, uh, read too much into it, but we don't want to.
Oh, no, they're not going to tell you what to do. They would just give you information.
Okay.
I, I now be honest.
And if it's something you guys want, let me know.
I, I, I wish, I wish a mandate would come down, make our lives a little easier, I'll be honest with you.
They're not going to do that.
I know. I know.
So this is the world of politics.
Yes.
Ms. Faas?
So just a comment from Sue. So when they have their meeting, they typically, um, open it to their, you know, residents. So I was wondering if it's going to be open to them. And then part two, um, especially if, you know, she's going to bring in this team to actually give us the information, would we be able to open it to our public? Because you have, you have parents who are, you know, on one extremity, you know, to the other. You know, some are, you know, hardcore, wear it, and some are hardcore, no. So I think it'd be nice to, um, you know, let them have their say-so.
So I, I would like to, so what I know right now is that we've maintained through the Open Meetings Act sent, that we were going to continue with the virtual for the audience. I'd have to check with GARI to see if that needs to be a vote, um, to go back to public. Although I don't think it has to go back to a vote because public is the normal protocol.
Correct.
Where the virtual is not the normal protocol. So if we wanted to open it up to the public, and I can verify with GARI, but I'm pretty sure all we have to do is to say, open to public, but meeting, uh, social distancing requirements.
You know?
Yeah.
Ms. Janu?
So I know we're not back to school yet, but we're planning on going back to school.
Correct.
So I personally think that our meetings, and this is just my opinion, I personally think that we should be open to the public. I, I mean, if we're sitting here, if our kids are going to go back to school, for us to sit here and say, you guys can't come and watch the meetings in person, I kind of feel is a little contradictory.
We're, we're at the behest of the board, however the board chooses.
Ms. Elziah?
So, um, the reason that was extended to September thirtieth from the county originally is because there were some places that didn't want to go back to live meetings. So they extended it for those people. But I felt since I've come on this board, we've always been a board who's been wanting and eager to come back to in-person. And if we are, I agree with trustee Janu, I, I'd like to see it happen before the school year starts. But I don't, you know, I don't want to like jump in and make rash decisions and then we have, you know, a hundred people here. We'd have to definitely plan for that and make sure we're doing it the right way.
Correct.
That was my concern. And so looking at the facility here, there really isn't a lot of room. So I know that we had more room at the high school. Are we able to do that? How is the equipment? I mean, we got to think of those, huh?
So the.
And my Quebec, okay.
The, the, I, and, and the other thing I'd like to look at too, David, if it's okay, you can yell at me later. What if we moved into the auditorium?
That would be good.
If that is doable, because then people can space out.
That's the best.
There is no air conditioning.
There's no air conditioning.
That's only going to be a problem for the next meeting.
Well, and you can cast it, do a first come, first served.
We can, yeah.
But we would have.
Wait till November.
Yeah, it's too hot.
Right.
I'm just saying, these are options.
Yeah. I, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Janu.
No, I was going to say, ideally, that's kind of what I was thinking, and I forgot about the air condition, so, um.
I'm willing to come in and help, you know, rearrange the room.
But can we, yeah, we can, I don't know.
I mean, we, we can figure it out.
We can even have people sit at chairs there.
We can definitely figure it out.
Oppositely.
And we can leave it as it is.
All right. Anything else, Dr. Mosell?
No, that is all from us. Thank you.
Okay. Um, there's a recommendation that we move into closed executive session for the purpose of lease agreement.
Some, support?
Support.
Forgot the word.
Support by Ms. Janu.
Oh, well, no, that's, she motions, I'll support.
You support. She was Janu's motion.
The way you said it, I thought somebody already motioned, but that's fine.
Okay, so, uh, before we can go into closed session for this, um, uh, please, roll call, please.
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Elziah? Ms. Elziah?
Yes.
Ms. Faas?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia's absent. Myself, Ms. Kaminsky, Mr. Sabah.
At six twenty-six?
Mr. Sabah.
Yes.
Time is six twenty-six. Thank you.
Okay, uh, motion to move into, uh, open session?
So moved.
Supported by?
Support.
Mr. Sabah? Okay, Ms. Janu, roll call, please.
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Elziah?
Yes.
Ms. Faas?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia's absent, myself, yes, Mr. Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
Chair of support.
All right, uh, that's it for the, uh, study session. Uh, we will, vote, a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to the regularly scheduled meeting.
Can I make a motion to adjourn the study session?
Go right ahead.
So I make a motion to adjourn the study sup- study session at seven oh two?
Support.
We have a motion by Ms. Kaminsky to adjourn the study session, supported by Ms. Elziah at seven oh two. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.